Brooklyn City Councilor Order, Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bell Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Barb Politzky.
Here.
We have the pleasure of being joined tonight by Pastor Carl Etheridge of the Harvest Ridge Church. He is also our president and he will lead us in prayer following the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you please stand for the pledge and remain standing for our opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, this evening, I pray for the leadership of Brooklyn. I thank you for each member of this council. I ask that you would give them wisdom in every decision, grant them discernment so they'll be strong and effective leaders. Every day remind them that they are not here for themselves, but for the community that they serve. Help them to lead and govern with integrity. Lord, bring unity to our leaders. Hinder them from moving forward on selfish interest. Though they put the whole of our community first, bless them abundantly. For the council members who follow you, help their words and deeds demonstrate their faith in you. Help them to be strong and courageous, standing firm in the truth, and influencing others for your kingdom. For those on our council who may have needs, I ask that you intervene. Provide what is needed, whether it be physical, mental, emotional, or financial. Show your sovereignty and that you love them. For our mayor, who has suffered a great loss, fill her and her family with grace and comfort. Be by her during this time of mourning. Father, I ask that you bless each member of council and our mayor. Bless them with joy and laughter. Let their lives be filled with love. Open their eyes to see you and that your overwhelming love for them is true. We ask it in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. You may be seated. All right, we do have some minutes to approve. Those are the minutes from the meeting date in November the 13th, 2018. Are there any comments or questions? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Sir.
To approve the minutes, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Stain.
Mary Bell Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Very good. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward to state your name and address and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. Okay, and there is no one. So we'll move out now with the reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll start this evening with the Finance Committee. We did meet at a regular time at 6:30, and I will go over the items that are up for adoption this evening and also any new items to the agenda. The first item is ordinance 2018-76, and this was discussed a couple meetings ago, and this is amending Chapter 155 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Brooklyn in regards to the city's Board of Control to put into alignment with the Higher Revise Code. I did want to read the changes to this ordinance into the record. The first change is under Section 155.02, the composition. We'll now read the mayor, service director, and the director of Public Safety constitute the Board of Control. The mayor shall be ex officio president. Section 155.03, Purposes and Duties. The Board of Control shall be responsible for approving all contracts under which the city is obligated to pay more than $5,000, and all changes to the amounts paid under contracts have been awarded by the city after competitive bidding. Then Section B, the Board shall keep a recording of its proceedings. All votes shall be yays and nays and entered on the record, and the vote of the majority of all members of the Board shall be necessary to adopt any question, motion, or order. The last change was under Section 155.04, Quorum and Agenda. Two members of the Board of Control shall constitute a quorum. And those are the changes that were made to that ordinance. The rest are stated as they were before. Then ordinance 2018-77 is up for a third reading and adoption, and this is the ordinance to implement a credit card policy for the city. State House Bill 312 was signed by the governor recently, and that requires that cities have a formal credit card policy and a procedure in place. We do have a single credit card that is in the possession of the Finance Director. Previously, we did not have a formal policy. This will implement said policy. Then next is up for a second reading, but the administration has asked me to pass by suspension of the rules this evening, is ordinance 2018-81, and this is establishing a capital reserve fund. And this ordinance creates a fund that will be used for three purposes: the payment of existing debt, financing of new debt and any capital acquisitions, and also capital improvements due to depreciation of assets here in the city. And this fund will be funded based upon the following ordinance, which is ordinance 2018-82, which we do hope to pass by emergency this evening as well. And this allocates the city's municipal income tax, the percentages, to different funds. The percentages did not change, just the one fund has replaced another one. So 84% will go to the general fund, 15% will go to capital improvement, and the 1% will now go to the newly created capital reserve fund from ordinance 2018-81. This 1% was previously going to the termination fund, which that fund is fully funded. We're estimating for the next 10 years or so, maybe even longer. And so the 1% change to the capital reserve fund, we believe, or the administration believes, is a better use of the assets. All right, and then under new business this evening is Resolution 2018-10, and this is approving the application of the city of Brooklyn to the Cuyahoga County Supplemental Grant Program for an exterior home repair grant program. And this is something that the mayor brought up at a previous finance meeting. And so this grant, if approved and we are accepted for it, will be used towards the implementation of an exterior home repair program. And so how it works is the grant we're applying for is $50,000. The city would match that dollar for dollar, so there'd be a total of $100,000 in this. And this will assist residents throughout Brooklyn to make exterior improvements to their homes, to their sidewalks, driveways, landscaping. And the grant amount will be capped at $3,000. It will target residents who are homeowners in the city and those who do not have access to such funds to be able to make those improvements. And there will be an application process that the resident will have to go through. And of course, those that have the greatest need will be the ones that are looked at first for this fund. And so the idea behind it is to help improve the housing stock here in the city of Brooklyn to those who would not be able to afford to do things otherwise. So that is Resolution 2018-10. All right, next is ordinance 2018-85, and this is approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Community Reinvestment Area Tax Agreement with Cleveland American LLC Holdings and Cleveland American LLC and Medical Mutual at the estimated cost of $23 million. This has to do with ordinance 2018-84, and this has to do with the financing over at the old AG property for Medical Mutual to give proper notifications for the schools, giving legal property descriptions. It's basically a housekeeping item for that project going on over at the old AG property. 2018-86, these are the amended annual appropriations for 2018, and we discussed these at the finance budget session that we had last week. And the appropriation changes are about $4 million, but the vast majority of this is simply transfers from funds that are no longer really necessary to the general fund. $840,000 of that is transferring from the landfill closure fund of the general fund. Another $1.3 million is being transferred from the Tiedemann 480 interchange fund to the general fund. And the landfill closure fund, although we're closing that fund, there are still ongoing costs to that, but those will now just be a line item as expenses on the budget. And also included some other items in there as well. We would overall these. It's a rather lengthy list, yet if Mr. Regus, if I've missed anything you want to elaborate, you can feel free to do so in your report. All right, 2018-87 are the annual appropriations for 2019, and the total general fund expenditures that we are budgeting for for 2019 is $15,462,875. And these were discussed at the previous budget meetings, and this will be on first reading. Ordinance 2018-89, authorizing the capital improvement plan for 2019. And of course, every year, the city goes through different needs for capital improvements. And this year, the total amount that will be expended is $4.6 million, $4,601,310. The lion's share, that a large portion of that, almost half of that, is the $2.1 million for the American Greetings property that will be financed through Tiff financing. Another close to $1.9 million will be from the capital improvement fund for various items throughout the city. $22,500 will come from grants. $530,000 will come from the street fund. Another $70,000 will come from the motor vehicle license fund. And again, that is on first reading. Then the last item discussed this evening was ordinance 2018-90, and this is updating the capital improvement plan for this year. Obviously, when you make a budget, it is just that it's a budget. There are changes that need to be made, and there were several. The largest one for this is the garbage truck that we ended up purchasing. This was supposed to be on the 2019 budget, but we had a vehicle that was actually better than the one we were budgeting for. It was available immediately, so we decided to go ahead and pull the trigger on that. We would have spent the money next year anyways, and that was at a cost of $295,670. Other $20,000 was used for an emergency engine replacement. $75,000 and change was used for the battery backup system at all of our lights from the police department. Another $42,742 was for the LED light conversion. Another $18,000 was for a new wall sign that will be put up at Tiedemann and Bidoff. And then $197,470, that deals with the Tiff financing there, but that was part of the AG property for the roadway construction that's going on over there. And that is on first reading as well. We will now move on with Recreation Board, and we have Councilman Tansky for that.
Thank you. City of Brooklyn Skate with Sand will be held on Sunday, December 9th, from 2:45 PM till 3:45 PM at Brooklyn Recreation Center, 7600 Memphis Avenue. Brooklyn residents will be admitted free, skate rental, non-resident rates in effect. You must show your Brooklyn resident ID card to receive resident privileges. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. For the Planning Commission, the next scheduled meeting will take place on Thursday, December the 6th, at 6:30 PM in the conference room. All are welcome to attend, and during the meeting, the committee will hear the following: A request from Ernesto Hudson for two wall signs for "Be Me Up," detail wash at 7323 Clinton Road; A request from Patricia Napoli for a banner sign for Enno Kane's baseball complex for six months at 8707 Memphis Avenue. Again, that will take place on December the 6th at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Conference Room. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Councilman Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Ms. Christine Sisco, the pre-K through 7th grade principal, presented a video, but unfortunately, the sound was not working well, and it had to be discontinued. She promised to show it again at a later date, and I will tell you about it then. But the theme was pairing young students with older students in a buddy system. New ideas that discourage bullying seem to be working. A chalk walk was a recent event where students drew chalk messages around the school. Positive messages were visible for all to see. The 7th grade class had an on-site at Memorial Park. They worked with Big Creek Connects to check pH levels in the creek. The students also planted trees on November 20th, 2018. Dr. Gleikoff recently attended an OSBA conference. He stated that the new governor plans to promote early preschool. Dr. Gleikoff is also hopeful that HB 369 has a chance in the lame duck session between now and the end of the year. A Christmas tree bill sometimes gets passed by elected officials whose term ends on December 31st, 2018. HB 369 is the bill introduced by Martin Sweeney, who will no longer be our representative. This bill, if passed, would give fair funding to Brooklyn, taking it out of the affluent suburb category. J.C. Powers of Strategic Communications gave a recap of the school levy results. He was encouraged that the levy lost by a small margin. The school board will review the results and decide when they will place a new levy on the ballot. The awards banquet was last Thursday, November 15th. The school play for 2019 will be Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. The Polaris renovation is going well, and that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is the Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. Reminder that there are white ribbons available from the Domestic Abuse Commission at the City Hall front desk. These are for White Ribbon Day, which was recognized yesterday, November 25th, and continues for 16 days. The white ribbon symbolizes a pledge to never take pardon, condone, or stay silent about violence against women. I hope that you take one if you haven't already and wear it through December 12th to show your solidarity and help raise awareness. Together, we can end the cycle. That ends my report.
Thank you. Will I have reports of council? Can we stay with you?
Oh. I just have one brief thing. The Cleveland Clinic is hosting a panel on the opioid crisis at the Brooklyn Senior Center on Tuesday, December 11th, from 6 to 8 PM. As I learned at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce luncheon a few months back, this is a topic that is sadly very relevant in many greater Cleveland communities, including ours. If you are interested in attending, you can register at www.clevelandclinic.org/Three Threat. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. First, thank you to Pastor Carl Etheridge for opening prayer today. Hopefully, everyone had a good Thanksgiving. With the holidays here, everyone is busy shopping for friends and family. Some, though, might not be in such a position. Brooklyn Community Cares and the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce is again providing holiday wishes. Each family is designated by a number, and you will see how many children, if there are food or personal care needs. Click on the family if you would like to see details about their needs. If a family is designated and with a line through it, the family already has been taken care of. To request a family, please send an email to Suzie Marquess at suzymarquess@bcshurricanes.org, or you can call 216-485-8191, extension A323. Please include the number of the family you would like to request. They are asking for donations to be delivered to our Brooklyn school by December 14th. Please send items unwrapped to Brooklyn schools by December 14th, and please label every bag with the family number. What I'm saying, you can look online, put into your computer "Brooklyn Community Cares" as one word, continuous, and you'll come up with their website. Also, the other thing is the Friends of the Brooklyn Library is holding a 10-cent paper bag sale starting December 1st going through the end of the year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope everyone had a very nice and blessed Thanksgiving holiday. I too would like to thank Pastor Carl for being here this evening and for also offering our opening prayer. We appreciate your presence here. Thank you. I attended the budget work session last week, and I'd like to thank Director Regus for all the information provided, and it was a good meeting. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Bell Beer.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Etheridge for his beautiful, very, very beautiful prayer. It was wonderful. I'd also like to recognize a family here in Brooklyn that every year puts out the most spectacular Christmas display. They're the Fowler family, and they live on Memphis Villas Boulevard, 8704. It's not too far from the old mayor's house, Mayor Bell Beer's house, a couple houses down, and they put on a most wonderful Christmas display, and they're having their lighting ceremony this Saturday. Fortunately, I won't be able to make it. I'm so sorry I can't because of work, but she, Mrs. Fowler, puts out wonderful cookies and hot chocolate, and they light up all the Christmas trees. Last year, I remember, they had 28, and this year, they have 32 Christmas trees. And it takes them quite a while to put everything up, but it's really nice, and they should really be recognized for all their hard work that they do. I'd also like to say something about that we all observe, and that is the use of the cell phones. Everyone from the very young age on seems to be constantly using their cell phones throughout the day. Number one, in my family, the kids are all addicted to it, it seems, even my older brother. Not just to actually talk to someone like on the regular phone, but they use it for information, they use it for games, and most often, constantly texting. Safety officers are particularly concerned about the use of cell phones and other distracting activity while driving. Recently passed House Bill 95 particularly addresses the issue. Part of the impetus came from the Ohio JC's Safe Organization, which is determined to educate the community about the dangers of distracted driving and to reduce preventable injuries caused by distracted driving. They have compiled statistics that show 23% of all auto accidents involve cellphone use. 13 million crashes a year are directly linked to distracted driving. 83% of drivers between the ages of 18 and 30 text and drive. 75% of drivers between the ages of 30 and 39 text and drive. One in five drivers admit to surfing the net while driving. 330,000 individuals are injured a year in distracted driving accidents. Recently passed House Bill 95 addresses this condition, and among other things, provides that for just about any traffic offense on the books, there will be an additional fine of $100 if the offender commits the offense while distracted and the distracting activity is a contributing factor to the commission of the offense. So if the officer writes that on your ticket for stop sign, red light, or whatever, you are subject for an extra $100 of fine. Distracting is defined and includes handheld devices being used for talking and texting. The law does provide that you can eliminate the extra $100 fine if you attend a distracted driving course, which shall be established by the Director of Public Safety and show proof to the court. Whether this law will really affect anything is debatable, but it is obvious that the distraction of cellphone use and particularly texting is a real safety problem recognized by our safety authorities. One thing that always amazed me is women that can put makeup on in a car while they're driving. To me, that is amazing. I just don't know how to do it, but I would think that is so distracting. So that pretty much completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Well, I know this is going to sound like a broken record, but I was told we were waiting for the election to go by, and that's why the mounds behind the houses were not taken care of because they were interested in this election until it was over. Now the selection is over, and I'm still here waiting for an answer, and I would think it would be even better for the school board to find a company to move those mounds now because in the wintertime, the construction companies are looking for work because it does slow down. So I don't know who wants to answer me this time, Mr. Colstar or the mayor, on these mounds in the back that keep getting delayed. At least give me some kind of answer. I can go back to the residents and say it's going to be done maybe in the spring, during the winter, which could be cheaper to move.
I'll take that one. Kevin, we're going to have to get back to you on that. My last conversation that I had anyway, and I think along with the mayor, was, you know, prior to the election. Whether that had bearing on it or not, I don't know, but I emailed Mr. Gleikoff some of the requirements. He told us that he had a contractor lined up to actually take care of that, and he hasn't responded back to us, you know, neither has the contractor. So I can follow up with him and then get back to you later in the week.
I know. We were trying to work with him, which I'm 100% for.
Right.
I just want to get some kind of date down in the near future, a little bit later, whatever, so I can get back to these residents on a timely basis.
I'll let them know. I'll let them know we're looking for that.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Politzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. We have so much to be thankful for. I don't know why my ancestors left Europe and decided to settle here, but I'm certainly grateful. Cleveland really is a great location. A little rain, a little snow, a little cold, I can handle that. I saw the Christmas tree lighting ceremony Saturday on Public Square. The lights were fantastic, but I wish the old Higbee window displays were still available. The Jack tried to decorate them, but it left a lot to be desired. Every now and then, the old is still better than the new. If you get a chance, go and judge for yourself. The people of California are in my prayers every day. I was there in 2007 for the Rose Parade. As we drove through Malibu, we marveled at all the homes on the hills. I can't even imagine what it looks like now. The horror those people must have faced fleeing for their lives and watching their homes destroyed. The death toll is still undetermined. Between the hurricanes that devastated the East Coast and the fires on the West Coast, our country has a lot to recover from. I pray that we have the ability to do that. I'd like to thank Pastor Eckridge for your prayers for the city and for all of us on council. We certainly do need direction from the Lord above to make all the decisions that we have to make. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. I've talked enough tonight, but I just wanted to mention one thing. I wanted to thank Mr. Regus for the very thorough budget sessions that he has put together. He's only been here for three months, and yet he was able to put together these budget sessions, and we're right on track to pass the 2019 budget. So thank you, sir. I very much appreciate your efforts and look forward to working with you the next year as well. All right, now we'll move on to the mayor's report.
May I be recognized?
Sure.
Thanks. I just want to follow up while we're still on council reports with a question to Director Colstar relating to the mounds by Rodon, and that is, would the contractor have to pull a permit for them for that work? Or we've told the schools what they need to do, and then they're going to communicate that to the contractor? Or are we going to have some sort of, I don't know if you want to call it oversight or input?
Yes, we will have input on that. It's something that actually needs to be approved by our city engineer, Doug Courtney.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Right, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone had a terrific Thanksgiving. Going with Thanksgiving, I wanted to thank Marissa Politzky, who runs a Jazzercise program. She hosted a Jazzercise event on Thanksgiving Day, and all the proceeds raised from that day was $200. They donated to the Brooklyn Cares Adopt a Family Program. They try to do this every year, and I think it's just one of the tremendous things that happens in our city that we need to be reminded of all the good stuff that goes on in Brooklyn every day. The surveys were mailed out for the master plan update. If you received one, please fill it out. We're trying to look for a 40% response rate. This will help to make sure our statistics are accurate. So we have about 274 people that have mailed them back as of today, and we're looking about 400. So if you have received one, please fill that out. It will help the steering committee, who is working on the master plan, give some direction for the future of Brooklyn. Steering Committee did meet at the end of November or the end of last month, and they did a small exercise. We will be posting all of these things online. Planning Commission has not done that yet, but they did an exercise to address the needs of the city's improvements, exceptions, opportunities, and strengths. I'll give you some examples, and if you have certain things of your own that you'd like to contribute, don't hesitate to reach out to me or one of the city council members, and we can pass it on to the steering committee. Some ideas for needs would be larger selection of types of homes available for homeownership, attract young families, support a strong school system, develop hurricane alley, have a new police station, rec center, and city hall, possibly combine some of these assets. Some improvements would, police department was mentioned a few times, public transportation, street paving and repair, look at facilities like the rec center and library that are dated, that used to be gems and are no longer gems, physical amenities like the parks and common areas. So a lot of the same ideas and concepts going over and over. Opportunity, looking at specific locations, the old American Greetings or Gold Circle, Memphis Drive-In, Clinton Road, what can be put in the vacant spaces. Look at and promote the opportunity of how close we are to downtown and to the airport and to major highways. Look at City Hall area and develop into a city center with small retail, medical services, pilot program to convert ranch houses into colonials. Some strengths, fire, police, city services, location of downtown, access to freeways, connection between city schools of business, the law enforcement, the personal touch for Brooklyn, the parks, the various denominations of churches. Some exceptions that were identified, expanding senior transportation services, embrace and celebrate Brooklyn's diversity, expand the green space. Safety in Ridge Park Square is a concern. Involve the corporations and businesses into the government, speed enforcement and I-480. So these are just a couple highlights. I just randomly read some of these, so this will be posted, and all this data will be on there because we want, even if you don't have the time or weren't picked to participate on the steering committee, this is a community project. So we are looking for feedback. As every single meeting the steering committee meets, this information will be uploaded onto a website, and I will post that once it is. And thank you again to the steering committee for agreeing to serve. It is a large time commitment, and you can tell It is a large time commitment, and you can tell that every single person sitting in the room is vested in the best interest of Brooklyn going forward. And my last thing is, I'm going to keep this short because I don't want to cry, just want to thank everybody for all the touching letters, notes, and texts and emails for the passing of my father.
Thank you, mayor. Well, now to move on with the directors' reports. We'll begin this evening with Finance Director Regus.
Thank you very much. I'll keep it quick tonight as we're winding down and finishing the budget season. It was a fun and great experience for me. I learned a lot, and I want to thank city council for their engagement and being part of the process, and also adjusting your schedules in the last minute as the schedule did get adjusted from what was originally planned out earlier in the year. So thank you very much, and I look forward to next year.
Thanks, sir. And the last report this evening is from our police chief, Chief Bokey.
Just wanted to let everybody know that Sando will be visiting Brooklyn Saturday, December 15th, and Sunday, December 16th, starting at noon. Saturday, the streets will be south of Bitoff, east of Ridge, and the Brooklyn Acres, and on Sunday, they'll start around noon and head north of Bitoff to the streets there. If weather is too bad, we're going to do it the next weekend, and this is all courtesy of the Brooklyn Police Auxiliaries, Mr. Parker included. So thank you.
Thank you, chief. I look forward to seeing them once again on my street. All right, well, now move on with legislation. And the first item for third-party adoption this evening is Ordinance 2018-76, amending Chapter 155 of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn to bring the city's Board of Control into alignment with the Ohio Revised Code. Are there any comments or questions?
Move to adopt.
Circle.
To adopt. Ron Venkirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politski.
Yes.
Also, one third-party adoption is Ordinance 2018-77, adopting a policy for the use of city of Brooklyn credit cards pursuant to revised code 9.21A. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt.
Say it.
To adopt. Ron Venkirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politski.
Yes.
On second reading this evening is Ordinance 2018-80, authorizing the mayor to enter into a shared services agreement between the city of Brooklyn and the city of Parma Heights for the position of animal control officer. On second reading and hope to pass by suspension of rules this evening is Ordinance 2018-81, establishing the capital reserve fund within the city of Brooklyn. Are there any comments or questions?
Introduce by, suspend the rules.
Circle.
To suspend the rules. Ron Venkirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politski.
Yes.
Also, on second reading, but hope to adopt by suspension of rules this evening is Ordinance 2018-82, determining the percentage of gross receipts from the Brooklyn Municipal Income Tax to be deposited into the general fund, capital improvements, and capital reserve funds respectively. Any comments or questions?
Introduce by, suspend the rules. Circle.
To suspend the rules. Ron Venkirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politski.
Yes.
On second reading this evening is Ordinance 2018-84, declaring the improvement of certain real property to be a public purpose pursuant to revised code Section 5709.40B, declaring such improvement to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, designating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, authorizing compensation payments to the Brooklyn City School District and Polaris Career Center, and repealing a prior inconsistent ordinance. The rest of the ordinances this evening are on first reading. Resolution 2018-10, approving the application of the city of Brooklyn into the Kyoka County supplemental grant program. Okay. That needs to get, the mayor just informed me that the administration would like to pass this by suspension of rules this evening. And so that's Resolution 2018-10, approving the application of the city of Brooklyn to the Kyoka County supplemental grant program for an exterior home repair grant program. And this is the program I mentioned a second ago that's for $50,000. The city would match $50,000. This is to help people to do improvements on their homes that otherwise would not be able to afford to.
Introduce by, suspend the rules.
Circle.
To suspend the rules. Ron Venkirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvair.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politski.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-85, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Community Reinvestment Area Tax Agreement with Cleveland American LLC Holdings, Cleveland American LLC, and Medical Mutual of Ohio at the estimated cost of $23 million. Ordinance 2018-86, amended annual appropriations. Ordinance 2018-87, annual appropriations. Ordinance 2018-88, amending Chapter 505 of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn to update the code regarding animals. Ordinance 2018-89, authorizing the capital improvement plan for 2019. And lastly, Ordinance 2018-90, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2018. That completes our agenda for this evening.